And do we want to do introductions briefly from up here, or is that necessary?
I would just have to introduce themselves as they start.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. It is 6 o'clock, so we will go ahead and call the hearing, our second public hearing, for a presentation of our master utility plan for the Buck Creek area. Again, we'll call it to order, and I will turn the meeting over to Neil. Just a couple of housekeeping notes, though, before I do that. If you have not already done so, would you please be sure to sign in on the sign-in sheet to your right, and then if you are going to come to the podium and speak later, you can just identify yourself by name, and then we've already got your address. So with that, Neil.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Neil Brook, and I am a certified grant administrator with Klein Peter Consulting Group. The public hearing tonight is in regard to the Tippecanoe County Master Utility Plan to address water, wastewater, and stormwater. The plan was funded with a grant through the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs in the amount of $50,000. The county provided $5,560 in local match from edict funds. And now I'm going to turn the meeting over to Michael here, who will explain the plan.
Great. Thanks, Neil. Yeah, as they said, my name is Mike Gangstad, and I'm with Lockmueller Group, and we're the consulting engineers that studied and put together this utility master plan for the communities of Americas, Buck Creek, and Colburn. So we -- what we were tasked to do was look at three aspects of each of these three communities, and these -- those three aspects were the drinking water, wastewater, and stormwater for each of them. And the existing conditions, as you all are probably aware, there is no existing overall community-wide drinking system for the three communities. So what we looked at were various alternatives to provide that service to the three communities. And there's really three aspects of that we looked at for each of the three communities, one of which was a centralized system where all three communities would have one central system to get the drinking water from. We also looked at an individual system for each of the three communities. And then the final, third aspect we looked at was a regionalized system, which would be actually obtaining drinking water from another community, the community that's already processed it. And really, it's essentially just buying the water off of those communities, and those communities were Delphi and Lafayette. So you can see there's a lot of different combinations of alternatives we looked at. And we present all these alternatives and put them together and do what's called a lifecycle cost analysis for them. And what that does, it weighs all the different costs that are associated with each alternative. For example, the initial capital costs, like in piping and well construction, water tower construction, all that, that would be an initial capital cost of the outset. And then you've also got, over the years after that, you would have operation and maintenance costs, you would have replacement costs of various items that fail over a period of time. So the only way you can fairly compare all these various alternatives is to do this type of an analysis. So in doing so, the analysis for the drinking water alternative ended up being a centralized system that is -- was located, or that would be located, in Americas. So all three communities would get their water from a new water treatment plant located around the area of Americas. And there would be individual water main pipes that would take the finished water to the other two communities, Colburn and Buck Creek. So that was the result of that analysis of drinking water. Analogously, we did the same thing with wastewater, in which we looked at the three communities, and again, we looked at three different aspects for the communities, one being a regionalized where your wastewater is collected and sent to a nearby community. Again, we chose Delphi and Lafayette for those potential areas. We also looked at a centralized option, which would be one wastewater treatment plant to treat the water, the wastewater, from the three communities. And then, of course, we looked at the individual alternative, where each of the three communities would have their own wastewater treatment system. And again, we do a lifecycle cost analysis on all of these alternatives and find out which one is the most economical. And it just so happens that the same alternative, the centralized, where you have one system in the three communities, the wastewater is sent to one wastewater treatment plant, and it is also -- would be located around the area of Americas. So those are the two, the drinking water and the wastewater systems. I also mentioned we looked at stormwater, and the stormwater alternatives are a little bit different than the drinking water and the wastewater. The stormwater really has to be a localized option for the three, meaning it doesn't make sense to send stormwater to a faraway community. And so what we looked at for the localized for stormwater were a couple options, putting in new swales and culverts under driveways, and then also looking at more of what would be considered a traditional storm sewer, where everything is piped. So for the stormwater systems, for Americas, the recommended alternative for it was an enclosed pipe storm sewer system down the middle of town, going north and south, and then the surrounding area, the swales in the surrounding area would be improved, new culvert pipes to get that water to the new centralized pipe system. Similar to that, at Buck Creek, it would be like that, where you would have a central main storm sewer piping system, and again, the swales and the various culvert pipes would be replaced in town to get that water to this centralized system. Now, it's a little different in Colburn. There's really no -- the way it's set up, there's no real -- there's no real logical way to put in an enclosed central piping system. So for that one, the best option ended up being just cleaning out swales and putting new culverts in. So we then put together a schedule for this, and then all the costs in this report, and presented it in this report here, in this master plan. And we had multiple meetings and presentations. I think we had about, what, Neil, five different presentations and community involvement meetings for that, so. And with that, I believe, if you guys want to entertain questions.
Michael, can you explain briefly what it is you mean by total lifecycle cost?
Sure, sure. Yeah, I can get into a little more detail on that. Okay, kind of like I talked about before, the, like, for a construction project, there's -- at the very beginning, there's the initial capital cost that it takes to construct, you know, whether it be a new wastewater treatment plant, or piping, or swales, there's an initial construction cost that's associated with the initial capital cost on a project. And but that's not -- you're not done at construction. After that's installed, there's operation and maintenance costs, electricity costs, there's -- you have to have a certified operator to operate this, and so you got to pay him. There's testing costs associated with not only drinking water, but wastewater treatment as well. There's replacement costs of pumps. There's a lot of other things that go into a project that is not -- you can't just look at the construction cost and choose the cheapest alternative based on that, because that may not be the most inexpensive alternative when you consider 20 years down the line. So you've got to consider all these costs, and what you do is put together what's called a net present value, where future costs, you have to bring them to present-day costs. And that's how you can -- that's the only way you can really effectively figure out which alternative is the best one.
And that's based off of the projected lifespan of the project itself?
Correct. We looked at a 20-year.
Okay.
And that's a typical time horizon for this, the industry.
Okay.
I don't know if we want to dig maybe just a little deeper into maybe a description of more, like, for the wastewater, for instance. I know I kind of just went pretty generally, saying it's a centralized system located somewhere around the Americas area. For the collection system, there was a couple alternatives we looked at on it, too. A gravity system and two pumping options, one of which is a, what's considered, what's called a step system, it's a septic tank elimination pump. And then there's also a grinder pump system, and it ended up being that the grinder pump system for the collection system was the best alternative. So each house would have its own basin, essentially, that would be underground with a pump in it, and your wastewater would be transmitted to it by gravity out of each of your houses to this basin. And then the pump then would grind all the material up and pump it out a, oh, about a three-quarter inch or one-inch diameter pipe that would then go and meet up with a larger force main where all the other pipes connect to. And then from it, then, it transmits through what's called a force main, it's just a pumped pipe that then sends it to the new treatment plant.
And so does every residence have its own grinder? Because I thought a couple, I thought there would be one grinder for every --
Sorry, Tom, you're heard here.
Would every household have its own grinder?
Yes, that's how we have it figured now.
Okay.
There might be some -- when we get further into the project, there might be some, possibly some shared systems where it makes sense to do that.
Okay.
And there could be some savings by doing that.
Okay.
But until you really start getting into the design and seeing where the elevations of everything is, it's safer to consider, let's just figure one for each house.
My name is Kevin Wyler. I apologize, I didn't make the last meeting, but --
Kevin, could you come on up to the podium, please? Thank you. And just restate your name so that we have it on the minutes.
Yeah, my name's Kevin Wyler. I don't know if you can hear me now. Okay. I apologize, I didn't make the last meeting, so you might have already answered this, but on two of the three things, it's been decided that maybe Americas would be the centralized location, but maybe for the drinking water situation is on what was the swimming factors or on that, you know, why Americas? Just one.
Right. Like, for the wastewater, the Wabash River is right close by, so from a regulatory standpoint, it's the -- what do you want to say? The regulatory hurdles are not as great to go over as it is if you're putting water into a small creek or stream.
Sure.
So, I mean, not to say --
That makes a lot of sense. I get that, but I'm not following if you're talking about drinking water.
Right.
Why, like, I'm from Buck Creek, you know, so why take it downhill all the way uphill all the way to Buck Creek?
Right. No, that's a good question. Generally, the elevation difference is not that much to make that big of a difference. And, you know, especially with pumped systems, you don't necessarily have to have it go uphill or downhill, it's, you can go any way you want with it. You can do this with a force main, so.
My concern was around the Americas area, I've been around that area quite a lot, quite a bit, and there's a lot of artesian water down there, you know what I mean? So to get good drinking water, whatever, you're going to have to go pretty deep, I take it, you know, to do that. I just wanted to know, make for sure, we're going to stay out of the artesian type thing, right?
Yeah, the artesian wells, that would make it such that it's surface water. We really want to get wells deep down, so with the artesian, you don't want a surface water treatment system if you can get a well treatment system.
Right.
So, yeah, we wouldn't affect that, no.
Because I know there's a lot of people from around Americas, I know that's got artesian water, I just didn't want to get that messy.
Yeah, yeah. We really would make this, when you start getting into a surface water treatment systems, they're quite a bit more complicated, a lot more regulatory requirements, and therefore it costs a lot more.
And Kevin, one, I mean, one of the things that we've learned through this process was, you know, from folks that participated, and we appreciate your help, is that obviously the storm, or the wastewater, is the big issue.
Right.
And that's the biggest crisis. But drinking water is not an issue right now.
I know, yeah.
And so we'll likely, we'll likely put that on down the road. Yeah, yeah.
I got you.
Yeah. Uh-huh.
Well, and to catch some folks up, because I see a lot of familiar faces out there, but I see some new faces as well, so maybe just a little bit of a history lesson as to what brought us here, for those of you who were not able to attend some of the earlier meetings. Obviously, these communities have been around for a while, and not unlike other small, unincorporated areas in Tippecanoe County, original lot lines were small in nature. There wasn't a lot of regulation when it came to putting in septic systems, and what we have found in a number of cases specific to Buck Creek is that we have aging systems that, if they were to fail tomorrow, it might be difficult because of the size of the lot for a homeowner to put another system in. And so what happens, what happens at that point in time? And in at least one instance in Buck Creek and another in Americas at a business site, there is no more room, and I know that the folks that own the business, the Pizza King there in Buck Creek, are going to have to, you know, are going to have to spend a lot of money to become compliant and have a system that fits the needs of the business, and we have at least one home right now in Buck Creek that is, for all intents and purposes, it cannot be, it's inhabitable because there's no more room for a septic system and/or the ability to put it on a pump and haul order, so those folks were stuck, and I think that house is still vacant today. As Commissioner Murtough said, clearly, the potential for a crisis at some point in time in the near future is in dealing with the septic issue. We know right now that many of the systems, or at least, I won't say many, but some of the systems in Buck Creek, in the very least, the overflows from those systems is likely hooked on to an old agricultural drain that empties straight out into Buck Creek. And so we're dealing with, you know, we have an IDEM complaint there that we're dealing with, and we thought, as the Board of Commissioners, that it was important for us to come up with a plan, instead of kicking this can down the road, so to speak, to a future generation. What's it, what does it take to start a system or to start the process? What are the upfront capital costs to take care of the septic situation in one community or in three communities? What does the monthly charge look like for a homeowner, quite frankly? I know that's probably one of the questions that's in the front of everyone's mind right now, and I, we don't have to go very far in Tippecanoe County to find a place that's already sort of addressed this issue, and believe me, in Romney, Indiana, it has been a long time coming, and they're just now in the construction phase, latter part of the construction phase, I understand. Has that been, was that 12 years from start to finish, or did I hear somebody say 15? It's, it's been, it's been a long time, and we certainly, what we don't want to have happen is, we don't want to be in a situation where all of a sudden we start, we start seeing these situations pop up in our smaller, unincorporated areas, and we don't have a plan to rely on or haven't given it thought. So that's what, that's what brings us to where we are today. We've got a lot of data and a lot of information, and as we did in the first meetings, we're certainly interested in knowing what you folks think about the process moving forward.
You can pull, you can pull, you can take it out and hold it.
My name's Kay Miller, and I live close to Americas. Now, when you were talking about the water systems, you want deep wells. Ours was 120 feet, and we had sulfur. Now, what they told us was, once the water goes through the shale, it oxidizes and you get sulfur water. You can't break that layer of shale. So that has created the problems. And we tried drilling, I think we have three empty holes in the ground, because we told them, once you hit the slate, quit. So it's not always that easy. The ones in Americas, I've been told, that have good water are 30 to 50 feet.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and, yeah, at least this initial stage, we don't go into actual testing of water and going into that, but that would, if and when it came to that point, for design purposes, that's when we'd start diving into it, and --
Well, that's just for your background information.
Sure.
And when they redid Old 25, they did the culvert at the end of our driveway, and it took them two weeks to decide, okay, between one and two weeks to decide. They couldn't shoot the telephone lines, because they couldn't find the bottom of the slate, and they'd gone down 30 feet. So I now have a telephone pole in the front yard after 30 feet. So that just tells you it's a thick layer down there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments or questions? The mic is open.
My name's Harold Beckner. I have several properties in kind of the Buck Creek area. I just seen it on the news today, is why I came, that my curiosity is what kind of timeframe you're looking at, is whether it's, you know, 10 years, 20 years. Like she said, we all know the water around Buck Creek in the eastern part of the county is not that great a water, and, you know, clay ground and everything. And I know it's obvious that Americas is probably the lowest of the solids, you know. You're talking a pump system, but to me, you know, Americas is obviously, as far as my background, you know, the best location as far as the river and being the lowest point. But my question was the timeframe, and then the, is there any location that's kind of in, whether it's county ground, or they own white people's ground, or are we even at that stage yet?
So, yeah, I'd say we're not, we're not at that stage yet, but what will happen, what will have, what will likely have to happen next is to form a district, a sewage treatment district, to do this. But, and then that would have a separate board that would, that would make up that different, that commission. But that, that group then would have to buy a piece of property. If you look at Romney, you know, they just purchased a piece of farm ground and put their package plant on that farm ground. So I think a couple different properties were identified as ideal, but nothing were, nothing's, you know, been hashed out, nothing's been talked about in regard to, to a purchase of a particular property. And then as far as a timeline, what would you say that would be, I mean, at the quickest, it would be, what, two to three years before it would be online?
Likely, yeah. It's definitely not going to be next year.
Exactly, exactly. So it's, it's, but I'm curious, too, you'd mentioned that you, do you have some water issues, water quality issues, in your --
Well, not in this, I, like, I own a mobile home park on 200 North, which is, you know, almost a county line, and the water's, you know, it's something you deal with all the time. You know, everybody's got water softeners and the iron and the smell and everything, so, and then, you know, in Americas, it's the same, same situation. I was also curious about, you're talking about, you know, like the Monticello around the lake, when they put in all the grinders and stuff, you know, they forced everybody to hook up, and like, say, my situation, you know, when you have multiple, you know, say 12 units on one piece of property, it gets pretty expensive. And then when you got vacancies, and, you know, I could go on forever, but I was curious, is this something that you're going to have to, like, some of the grounds, like when the county or the city annexes you, you hook up when you fail, or they'll hook up the water, but until your septic fails, you don't have to hook up? Is that going to be this scenario, or are you going to be forced to be hooked up?
Well, the numbers that they're looking at, in order, you know, in order to make the project work, you know, they're looking at the households in the area to come up with a cost per household, you know, and we haven't gotten down into the weeds about what that cost is going to be, of course, but in order for that to be cost-effective for everybody, almost everybody's going to need to participate. So it's going to be really, really difficult if, you know, if it's, if the hookups only come when systems fail, because that's going to mean that the people that, that hook up are going to be paying an exorbitant price, you know, for that, so. But that is something that we can look at through the process.
And I guess the biggest thing I'd ask to keep in consideration, especially, you know, Buck Creek, Americas, and Colburn areas, a lot of the properties, you know, they're not four or five, 600,000, you know, so you're not --
Exactly, exactly. That's what makes this really tough.
-- homeowners to be able to drop $10,000, $20,000 hookups.
Exactly, exactly, yeah.
I mean, even the businesses, I know the Pizza King in Americas, I actually priced that system, and, you know, it was a $100,000 system, because it was a mound system, but there was other reasons, too, but, so that initial hookup fee is going to be a big impact on everybody.
Exactly, exactly. And we're hoping that there's funds out there, you know, grant funds, that can help with that, you know, to help keep those overall costs as low as possible.
And the reality is, even if you get, I mean, if we had grant funds to build it, if we put a system together that people can't afford, this will never, this will never work.
Yeah.
I mean, so that, it is, it's a, it is a balance.
Something else to keep in mind, I know, probably don't want to hear, but there's a lot of ground, vacant ground, agriculture ground, that's just, when you design this system, there's people just waiting, just, you know, to put in subdivisions, 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 so keep in mind that, you know, if you build this small facility, then, you know, all the developers are going to be knocking on your door wanting, you know, which is not necessarily what we want, but the reality is, when you get water, you sewer, you've got development.
And that will help get the cost low, too, you know, for, you know, the -- And, and that will help get the cost low, too, you know, for, you know, the more they participate, the cheaper the cost is for everybody.
Was the test wells that was done at the old Ares Airport, is that anything to do with this project, or?
No, that's for the city of Lafayette. Those are the, those will be future wells for the city of Lafayette. But I'm curious, too, is your, your, the trailer park you mentioned, is it in the study area? I guess I'm not...
You're way out off of 200 North, East County line, yeah.
Yeah, but they, 10,000 block of...
Oh, okay.
Almost, almost a county line.
Okay, okay, all right.
And then, yeah, 5,600 and 10,000 blocks, two every one.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Just a comment from Barb Canacal, Township trustee. Can you go back and clarify the priority as far as the three different types of projects, so that people understand? I know we talked about it in some of the meetings, and I know drinking water is the third priority, and it's probably way down the road. And then the other thing is, is there a map available so people that have not seen one of the study area, but who can see where their properties might be?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Do you want to?
Well, maybe the, from what I know from, from, from what we were talking before, I think I'm going to answer, if I don't answer this correctly, let me know. But wastewater is really the highest priority, if you will. Stormwater being second, and probably drinking water, third. Is that, is that kind of what you're...
You weren't looking at them, one, two, three, I mean, there was time between them two, I think, who we meant, because I was thinking drinking water was way down the pipe.
Sure, sure. In fact, in the study, I think on the drinking water, we don't have a defined schedule on that.
That's right.
It's, the way we had it set up was, the schedule was really based around the wastewater one. And it would just be that the drinking water, we would revisit it and get a more established schedule as time progresses.
And I might add that the wastewater was what brought us together to begin with. I mean, this is something that the Commissioner's Office has been involved in for a number of years now. And once we knew that we were going, that we were approved for the planning grant, then it just made good sense to go ahead and at least look at the other options, even if they were things that we just put in a file cabinet, you know, and don't use for a number of years, that somebody would ask the question, and we just wanted to be prepared for that.
John Metrol, out of Buck Creek. I've had several that live in Buck Creek, and we've been talking, and they want, they have no idea, they live across the tracks from inside on 750 going towards East Tim. They didn't know anything that's what was going on at all. And they want to know if they're included in this, or where are, as Mrs. Canacal said, do we have anything to show the whole perimeter of who's going to be inside of this work that we're going to be doing?
We do. We don't have it, I don't believe we, other than maybe just a paper copy right now, we don't have it for the screen.
They're in each of the studies, our figures that we can show you here.
When?
What's that?
When?
Just right here. If you want to, I could...
Nothing I can take with us.
We can make some copies.
Well, we can make, yeah.
Okay, email tomorrow.
And we'll figure, we'll figure out a way to make it, to make this accessible so that folks have questions.
It's something to figure it out for them to say, I mean, do you go, are you going clear out to East Tim?
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
There was some early, I mean, just to remove any confusion, there was some early talk about that because the school corporation's plant was in need of some repairs. Since this conversation started, they've since upgraded their system, and they're, they're in better shape now. So it, but it does, but it does extend south of town on 750 for, to basically catch all of those houses that are there prior to the next, the next crossroad. I think it catches probably half a mile or so. Doesn't, it does not go all the way to 300, but just outside of town to that first group of houses, they're, they're all included in the study.
The second group of houses that's around the S curve, all the...
They probably would not, I would guess, we'll have a map here shortly, but I would guess they're not.
On 25, when you're coming out, 450 down to 25, okay, that's going to be included, where the Shakers Acres and all that will be in there?
I don't believe, I don't believe it is.
Oh, it's not?
It's not.
Okay, because people on the other side of the highway were wondering, you know, that's the Davis consultant, they were wondering whether...
It is, it is a pretty, it is a pretty tight area around Buck Creek, Colburn, and Americas. And then if you drew lines between the three communities, some of that area that is around those lines is included as well, because it would, if you're going to have forced mains and things like that there, it makes, it makes sense to have that be the service area.
All right.
And that doesn't, that doesn't, that's the, that's the initial study area, and that doesn't preclude the possibility that could grow over time.
Sounds good now.
And while we're waiting, I also want to thank, thank Barb Canacal for her involvement in the process. She has been involved in this since day one and actually helped with some of the, some of the funding, some of the match funding. So she's been a key partner in this, along with our friends from Lockmueller. And this has taken, it's taken a great deal of work to get us where we are now. And this started a number of years ago. This is not something that just started brewing last year. This, this dates back, I think, to 15 or 16, when we first started having this conversation. And again, when you look at what has happened in Romney, that has been a very slow roll, for whatever reason. And I would just like for us to be a little better, better prepared in the event that something happens and we, and we have to move quicker than what they did there. Did you find a map?
Yeah. Well, it looks like the maps are all, are three separate maps, right?
I believe so. For one, for drinking water, and for stormwater.
Well, and one for each of the three communities. In other words, it's not one map that shows...
We have one map that shows all, because we have to use that to any kind of study.
It doesn't look like it's in there before.
It would not be in in the Lockmueller study.
Okay.
But it's what we submitted with the grant?
Yes. Is it available, I can go make copies?
I'm going to look and see if I have it on...
I just pause. Have we all hit copy out of it, or is it just John?
Oh, yeah.
It's on the email, but it's all sent to you.
Let's see if it's in my OneDrive file. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment about the project? Mr. Beckner?
I was just thinking, earlier when you said that you were looking at what grants are available and stuff, is that the, is that how you're planning to finance the majority of the project, just through whether state money or grant money, whether it's individuals or taxpayers or tax money? Because, I mean, the population is really small compared to, you're talking multi-million dollar projects.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, the way, the way Romney was funded was through grant money and then a forgivable loan through, was it the Indiana Bond Bank, or I can't remember.
Rural Development?
Or maybe it was through Rural Development, yeah. And so we're hoping to do something like that. And so it was, the county did front a little bit of money to Romney for, to start that, to get that project off the ground. But for the most part, the, the capital project itself was paid for by those two sources. So we're hopeful that the, you know, the costs we're talking about, that the $9 million or so, that it can be largely grant funded. So the cost that would be passed on to the property owners would be, would only be the actual cost for the monthly operation.
Do you know what the Romney monthly fee is?
It, it was around $80. It may have been $85, I can't remember.
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four, okay.
Is the, is the Romney project, is it both? Are they just waste, or are they drinking and...
It's just, it's just wastewater.
It's just waste?
Yes, yeah.
Where will fall off there, why so long, what happened?
Um, you know, it was, I don't know. The, it, it could have been the funding. I will say that this particular initiative is, the Governor's Office has determined that this is an important initiative for Indiana, especially rural communities. And so there's additional funding available now that wasn't, that wasn't...
So you keep comparing us a little bit against them, we won't make those same mistakes.
Well, and I, out of fairness to the folks in their board down there, one of the things that they got into, that I know a little bit of the history, was the back and forth about what best, what system best served that area. And then also, they looked at the possibility of connecting with the system that was in Linden, and it was, that was on again and off again in terms of being able to come to some sort of an agreement there. And then I think there was even a significant delay when they were looking and working on getting the land, the actual physical land for the site, took them some work. So, I mean, a lot of people...
Well, at one point, they were going to Romney Township, too.
Right.
So once they got started, they went ahead. They, they didn't get started, then stopped, then started, then stopped.
No, they prob, honestly, and there's some good people that served, I know they're going to have, they're going to have a great system, and it is, and quite frankly, they probably had too many choices to make. And fortunately for us, in this area, you know, we've, a lot of the things that looked at utilizing services of nearby communities, you know, Linden is just a couple of miles away from Romney, Delphi is substantially longer distance, and there are capacity issues and cost issues with doing that. So a lot of the things that maybe were, were suggestions for Romney and things to look at, we don't necessarily have available to us.
Was Romney incorporated?
No.
No.
So that's not an issue?
And just so you know, you're not alone. This is going on all over the state, virtually a lot of...
Yeah, virtually every small community, yeah.
Small unincorporated areas.
We have a different consultant than Romney's office, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. So if, I understand we do need to pass the resolution, correct?
Pass the resolution, approving the planning grant.
So do you want me to read the resolution?
Go ahead.
Okay. So this would be Resolution 2019-25-CM, whereas Tippecanoe County has identified adequate reason to develop a utility master plan. And whereas Tippecanoe County has hired Lockmueller Group to define and describe the issues relative to stormwater, wastewater, and drinking water for the unincorporated communities of Buck Creek, Colburn, and Americas, advise the county of its options and make recommendations to address those issues in the near future. And whereas Tippecanoe County has received federal community development block grant dollars from the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs to fund this study, and has contributed $5,560 as a local match for this project. And whereas Tippecanoe County has reviewed the process and completed this, and completed the study. And whereas Tippecanoe County has received copies of the utility master plan for its record and will keep them on file in the county offices for future reference, now therefore be resolved by Tippecanoe County that the final document is hereby approved, contingent upon comments and approval received from the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs. Tippecanoe County will further consider all comments and feedback received from the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs, and will direct its consultant to provide and amend copies of the plan reflecting all said comments. And with that, I will make the motion that we approve Resolution 2019-25-CM.
Here we have a motion, and I will second the motion of the approval and adoption of the resolution as outlined by Commissioner Murtaugh. Is there any further discussion?
Other than to say, we do, the copy of this is online. It is a pretty significant document, so to email it is almost impossible. But we do have at least, at least one extra copy that if there's a central place that it could be taken, maybe...
That's what I was trying to think of, because I was also thinking it'd be nice if we could have one of the large maps, too. I could probably put it in the fire station.
That's not a bad idea. So we'll, so we'll make sure you get a copy for the fire station.
And we don't need any more public comment. Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
What about the post office? That's easily accessible by people.
And is there...
It's locked in the off hours, and, yeah, if they let us use it, is the fire department open? It can be open.
Want to go on with the vote?
Yeah.
Okay, we do have a, we have a motion and a second for adoption of the resolution as outlined, again, by Commissioner Murtaugh. Hearing no further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, and the motion passes. Hearing none?
I'll make the motion, we adjourn.
Please stand adjourned.